Is the pastor here? Okay, I just was making sure. Yes, sir. We'll get started in a few seconds. All right, it's seven o'clock. Everybody ready? I would like to call the Monday, April the 28th, 2025 Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the link for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a certain agenda item or during privilege of the floor, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so have been listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name, address, and topic you are speaking on, as those are required for speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name, I live at address, and I would like to speak on or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome all of you to this meeting today. And we also would like to let you know that disrespectful, rude, or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as a verbal attack on any person, may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we're going to call Pastor Jim Bayer from Gospel City Center Missionary Church to give us our invocation. Will it stand, please?
We read in God's Word, all of you, clothe yourself with humility toward one another, because God opposes the proud, but shows favor to the humble. Humble yourself, therefore, under God's mighty hand, that he may lift you up in due time. Cast your all your anxieties on him, because he cares for you. This morning, or this evening, as you conduct the business of our great city, I implore you to heed the words of God, a call to humility, a call to surrender. And we must each remember that no matter the race, color, or creed, God cares for you. Let's pray. We thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the sunshine that you poured down upon us, and we thank you for your great love. We thank you for the privilege of living in this city. And we pray now that, as the council considers the business of this committee, you may bless them. May they be humble towards each other and towards you, and may they be surrendered to your will. And so we thank you and praise you again. Bless each person here. In your name we pray. Amen.
All right, Clerk Toronto, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gooden Rogers?
Present.
Councilmember McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Present.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson? Councilmember Niskowski?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis?
Present.
Vice President Tomas Morgan?
Present.
President Lee?
Present.
All nine present.
All right. We will now have a report from the Subcommittee Committee on Minutes from April the 14th, 2025.
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April 14th, 2025, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
I would now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All agree? Say aye.
Aye.
The opposition? Motion passes. We have no special business, and we have no reports from the city office. I would now entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
The move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes.
Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meetings where bills are given a second reading and a public hearing before a committee made up of all nine council members. All bills set for this public reading and public hearing have previously been given a first reading and a committee hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, we will hear from the chairperson of the standing committee where that bill was discussed and the results of that discussion. If a proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the council report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. Additionally, members of the public shall have the opportunity to address the council in the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 1425 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, annexing to and bringing within the city limits of South Bend, Indiana, certain land located in German Township, contingents therewith, council medic district number one, north of the intersection of Edison Road and Sundown Road, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Yes, is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The zoning annexation committee had a meeting this afternoon, and we bring Bill 1425 to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morell?
Skip Morell, Principal Development Planner with offices on the 14th floor of this building. As stated, this annexation is located just north of the intersection of Edison Road and Sundown Road, just east of St. Joseph Valley Parkway. That request has been made by the current property owner, Fort Wayne Logistics LLC. The annexation area is approximately 8.9 acres and meets the state law contingency requirement. Currently, as you can see on the site, are two buildings that total up to about 43,000 square feet. The petitioner is seeking to utilize the site for warehousing and to construct a 13,000 square foot addition. No capital improvements are planned by the city as part of this annexation. Water is available on Edison Road, just to the south there. As far as public sewer, that's available on Ardmore Trail over 2,000 feet to the south. So any extension would be done at the sole expense of the developer with approval by the Board of Public Works and St. Joseph County. The Edison Sundown Annexation Area will be added to Council, Common Council's First District, and be served by Police Beat 24, Fire Station 6, Emergency Medic 4, and Neighborhood Services and Enforcement Area 2. It's currently zoned I Industrial in the county, so it would be a like-for-like zoning of I Industrial in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. For Bill petitioner? Come up, please. I ask that you start first with your name and address, and then share with us the key points of your petition.
Chris Goduski, representing Abin Marsh, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. He also represents the landowner Kevin Bone, who owns Fort Wayne Logistics. And as Skip alluded to, purpose of this is an annexation. He's going to construct a building, and the purpose of that is he needs public water for fire suppression. He's going to enhance the internal storage of his existing buildings, build a new building, add public water for fire suppression in there as well, which will just enhance the opportunity on his site. It would be septic for wastewater, as there's only bathrooms. Is looking to construct this late summer, early fall. After annexation process, we'd go through the city review, plan review, and permitting process, and meet all applicable standards. I can take any specific questions you have.
How soon would you guys start on construction?
He already has some of the materials ordered. Less we go through the planning review process, probably could be as early as, I don't want to say July, but probably August, to be safe. And I think he's pretty sincere and moving quickly. It'll be about 10 jobs added to the site as well.
Thank you. That was a question I was going to ask, was what kind of increase in operations was? The other questions from council members.
Yes, what is the salary of those jobs?
I don't know that without the client. It's logistics. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. You're going to have several office workers, forklift drivers. So if you probably look at a, probably a median range in the area, that's probably pretty fair. But I can't answer that specifically.
So I will say, third reading will be next meeting, because the annexation requires second, third, so maybe for the-
I can get that information.
When we have the third reading for that. Thank, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers?
Yes, I just wanted to know, are we using any local? Local workers?
Well, considering, yes, these will be local, local hires. They're not contractual workers. They're just workers hired in addition to what's already there locally. So it'd probably be within the county, if not just a touch further, so yes.
Well, no, I was speaking more in terms of, I'm sorry.
Construction.
Yeah, for the construction, like IBW, any union workers or?
Not aware of that either, and I can't find out that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything other questions? At this time, we'll go to the public hearing portion. Members of the public shall have the opportunity to address the council, beginning with members of the public in favor of the bill, limited to five minutes, and then going to members of the public against the bill, also limited to five minutes. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 1425, either in person or online?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Anyone in person or online wishing to speak against the bill?
I do not see anyone in person or online wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
At this point, the public hearing on Bill 1425 is now closed. Councilmembers, any other questions or?
That we spent, that we send Bill 14-25 to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
A second.
Is that the next time, though?
That is, it is.
It's, it's in committee of the whole to hold next time. Okay, just public hearings, so no motion.
Okay.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, with that, we will close on Bill 1425 and move on to 2325. At this time, Clerk Toronto, can you give Bill 2325 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, amending Chapter 6, Article 9 of the South Bend Municipal Code to update regulations for flood damage prevention.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. This was heard this afternoon in Public Works and Property Vacation Committee, and was given a favorable recommendation to the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Ms. Throw?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jenna Throw, City Attorney with offices on the 12th floor of this building. And I'm here this evening to present on Bill Number 23-25 with the assistance of Randy James. And this is a bill to amend Article, or Chapter 6, Article 9, to update the floodplain regulations in the city. We went over this a bit in committee earlier, but, and in committee, the higher meeting. But just as a refresher, the, the background behind this ordinance is that these updates are required by FEMA and the Indiana Department of Natural Resources to allow the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The language itself in the ordinance that's before you this evening is, comes straight from a model ordinance that was provided to us by the Indiana DNR. And the specific language that you see in front of you has gone through an approval process with the DNR prior to being filed with the Common Council. And similar ordinances have already been adopted in other municipalities throughout the county, including by the county, as part of this requirement. Some of the features of this ordinance are expanded definitions applicable to floodplain regulation, requirements for a floodplain development permit, which, as Randy explained earlier, is something that already existed, but the, this ordinance flashes out quite a bit more. Also includes requirements for critical facilities such as hospitals and additional provisions to reduce flood hazards. It includes detailed enforcement provisions, a formal appeals process, and generally is a much more robust, detailed, structured, and enforceable framework for managing flood risks. And anything else that?
Yes, Randy James, Building Commissioner, offices at 125 South Lafayette. Yeah, this ordinance is basically, it, it helps us with the, the flood insurance program, qualifies us for that, but it also helps with FEMA disaster relief funds, too. So if, if you don't participate in this, it kind of, it has a negative effect on getting FEMA funding when we do have a disaster. Also, we already have in place $18 million worth of covered properties in the city of South Bend alone. There's plenty others in the city and other towns in the, or I mean, in the county and the other towns, so. It's a very important ordinance. I think the last time it went through was 10 years ago, so it doesn't get updated a lot, but it's a very good ordinance, and it's something that we need for our constituents.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any preliminary questions at this time? Councilmember Niskowski?
Thank you. I just, for clarification, I know we spoke about this during committee, but this was sent to the DNR for approval. It took five submissions before this was accepted. So this is something that you know if passed will be accepted by the state through the DNR that was mandated by FEMA.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we pass it here, it'll go to the DNR, they'll send it back to FEMA to make sure nothing has changed, and then it'll be approved. And we'll be good for another 10 years, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none, we'll go to the public hearing at this time. Any members of the public wishing to speak on the bill?
I do not see any members from the public or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Any members online wishing to speak, or in the public wishing to speak against the bill?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Okay, with that, we'll go back to council. Any further discussion? Any motions?
I'll make a motion to send Bill 23-25 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, roll call, please.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowden Simpson?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis? Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers?
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President Lee?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. With that, the bill will go forward with a favorable recommendation. And we will move on to Bill 2625. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 2625 a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 13, Article 4, Section 13-58, Chapter 2, Article 12, Section 2-142, and Chapter 13, Article 10, Section 13-96, to update the regulations for discharging firearms.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. Bill 26-25 was amended in health and public safety this afternoon and comes to the Committee of the Whole favorably with a substitute bill.
Thank you. Ms. Throw?
Good evening, Council. Jenna Throw, City Attorney with offices on the 12th floor of this building. And we come before you tonight with Bill Number 26-25 with updates to the firearm discharge ordinance. And as Councilmember Tomas Morgan mentioned, we've come before you with a substitute bill. And I will explain the cha, the change there as we go through it with my presentation. Generally, the intent of the ordinance's updates are to increase the enforceability. And I think that the, the change that we made in our substitute bill does that even further by, we've changed a may to a shall in one of the provisions to line that up with where there's a shall indicated in the penalty provision in another penalty section pertaining to firearm discharge, which further increases the enforceability. And we also address some Second Amendment considerations by including a self-defense exception that would have been required to address Second Amendment concerns. And the updates that we did combined some other firearm discharge provisions in other parts of the ordinance and other exceptions to put all of those within the same ordinance, so that it was less confusing for a member of the public to see what requirements there were regarding the discharge of a firearm. And this bill also cleans up some other provisions of the code related to those changes. So the, the main section, 13-58, subsection A incorporates the definition of a firearm from Indiana law to provide a consistent definition across governmental entities as to what we're regulating. And we had a great conversation about that in committee. And my colleague Kylie Connell, who's online tonight again, she shared that while I think there is still a desire to regulate some of those other types of non-explosion propelled weapons, that it is helpful to focus with this section on the types of weapons that do meet the definition of firearm. And she did confirm in between meetings that those pellet guns and things like that, based on Indiana case law, do not meet the definition of firearm. But, so we did confirm that with case law, based on the conversation that we had in committee. So then subsection B clearly defines a prohibited conduct, so that it's very clear what we are regulating in this, in this section. And then subsection C contains the various exceptions that previously were located in a few different places in the municipal code, but we've compiled those all together, so that they were all in one section. Instead of, there was some language about exceptions for cemeteries in different parts of the code, but we wanted to make sure that that was all kind of consolidated in one section. And then subsection D, which is where we made the change in the substitute bill, adds the penalty for the fire, for violating the ordinance. The additional changes that were part of this bill, those were also just part of the cleanup in making sure that any of the firearm discharge provisions were put into one section. Section 2-142 previously dealt with an exception related to cemeteries. So we took that out and put it in 13-58, and then removed a reference to that section from 13-96. And then Kylie Connell is online as well for any additional questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any preliminary questions at this time? Councilmember Davis?
Yes, because Indiana law does not define that, from that standpoint, we cannot add that in there.
So I think, well, what Kylie was mentioning during committee was that it, we could regulate it in maybe a different section, but that she, we felt like it was important in this section to focus on the regulation of firearms that actually fall within the definition of firearms as governed by Indiana law, because Indiana law is very very restrictive on what municipalities can do to restrict firearms. But those restrictions apply if they meet the definition of firearm. Where if some of these other weapons don't, they, it may be, there may be a little bit more that we can do. So we're open to regulating those other types of weapons like pellet guns or air guns separately. But as Kylie mentioned, I think with this particular section, it's helpful to focus on the types of weapons that actually meet the definition of firearm.
So in this section, keep it like what you're recommending?
Right.
Then later on, come back to something else to add that. And we could possibly do that on the home rule kind of things, or?
Yeah, that's something, yeah, something that we can look at.
One follow-up, it's a little bit different. What was the whole thing about the military funerals? What was the whole thought behind that?
So I, I know that was previously an exception that was included within, like, conduct in cemeteries. And I, I believe sometimes during certain military process during a funeral, there is sometimes the discharge of a weapon. And so I think that's meant to exclude those types of ceremonial discharges from receiving a 2,500 And so I think that's meant to exclude those types of ceremonial discharges from receiving a twenty-five hundred dollar ticket.
But typically, well, uh, isn't that the military doing that?
I can answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
So I've, I was a member of the American Legion for a number of years, being that I'm a veteran. Uh, and sometimes you'll have those American Legion clubs or DAV clubs can do a twenty-one gun salute for a veteran. Um, they do have rifles that will discharge, you know, a projectile as described here. Um, but it's strictly for ceremonial purposes to honor that veteran. So it's just not always the military if you can find a, a military entity to come in and do it. Uh, but there are American Legions, DAVs, that type of thing that actually, and I think even Sons of the American Legion, uh, have participated in that.
I'm al- I'm almost always have considered them a part of the military, even though they officially may not.
Yes.
I've always, I just didn't, I mean, I just don't want that to be open where at a funeral, somebody can just go and do that.
No, no, no. It's a very strict, um, ceremony that they have. Um, so it's very, and it's pretty much the same. I actually served on a military burial detail when I was in the US Army. Um, and it pretty much follows those same guidelines. So there's a whole, um, process that takes place. They're lined up. They make sure the area that they have is clear. Um, before they, it's always like even a pre-dress rehearsal, if you want to call it that. Uh, so everybody knows exactly where they should be at the time that that rifle is discharged.
But this does not give people the right to use firearms at a cemetery?
It's an exception. So it allows for a burial detail to honor the veteran.
So in C, C five, um, prior city authorized events. So those kinds of funerals would need prior authorization.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
Councilmember McBride.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to, uh, ask again that we are ensuring, I know this come under, uh, the Health and Safety Committee, but I know that we also have council working, uh, members working on, uh, our council ordinances, which are, uh, part of the city's updating ordinances. So I'm just asking the president if we can make sure that we are working together with these ordinances that council have, uh, inside and is at the table with administration with the update of the ordinances. And I can follow up with you later on, uh, a more detailed conversation about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody else at this time, we will go to the, uh, public hearing portion. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak either in favor or against Bill twenty-six twenty-five? In person or online? Yes.
Second. You want to ask first?
Got a motion in a second.
Clerk Toronto.
Could you take a vote now?
I don't think she.
Okay.
The chair.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Substitute is.
Thank you.
Adopted? Okay, um, so now we will go to the public hearing portion of the bill. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on substitute twenty-five dash twenty-six?
I do not see any members from the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Bring it back to council. Any, uh, further discussion?
Um, I just have a comment. I, I do think it's helpful to, um, separate the, the pellet guns and BB guns and, and others from this ordinance. So look forward to, um, uh, with health and public safety and, um, Councilmember White to have further discussions on this, um, and other, uh, if there's any appetite for an ordinance that might address those.
I think we should. It would be dangerous to.
Any other comments or discussion? Any motions?
I move to send Bill twenty-six dash twenty-five to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
A motion and a second. Clerk Toronto, could you please do a roll?
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizkowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. So, uh, Clerk Toronto, can you please give Bill twenty-seven twenty-five a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter thirteen, article seven, section thirteen dash eight one, to repeal the ordinance prohibiting public nuisance noises.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is, Chair. Bill twenty-seven dash twenty-five comes to the committee of the whole with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Throw.
Good evening, Council. Um, Jenna Throw, City Attorney, uh, with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. And I come before you on Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-five, um, which we're presenting as a repeal of section thirteen dash eighty-one. Um, the intent of this ordinance is to increase clarity in the enforcement of the city's nuisance noise ordinances. And, um, the main thing that I want to emphasize is that, um, even though this specific ordinance is, um, labeled as a repeal, this does not mean that we are repealing the enforcement of nuisance noise ordinances. We are trying to strengthen the enforcement of nuisance noise ordinances. They are, we are already addressing, um, nuisance noises in detail in section thirteen dash fifty-seven. But in looking at the various public safety ordinances, we noticed that thirteen dash eighty-one also addressed this topic, but in a more vague way and less detail. And we were concerned that the overlap between those two sections were, would cause confusion to the public and potential issues with enforcement. And as, um, my colleague Kylie Connell mentioned in committee, um, there is nothing that we would be losing in enforcement by, dropped by repealing thirteen dash eighty-one and proceeding with enforcement under thirteen dash fifty-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members, any preliminary questions? Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I see that Chief Ruskowski is on the line. Um, and I had asked this in, in committee, but could, could you or one of the attorneys just explain, uh, for members of the public and the council, what is the process for filing, uh, noise complaint? And how does the, um, police deem a, a violation of noise? Chief, would you like to answer that?
I can jump in too. Um, this is Kylie Connell with offices in the office, or in the building that you guys are in right now. Um, and the main way to report any kind of noise is typically through PD. Um, it might not always be an emergency, but you can always contact the non-emergency number. Another way would be through three-one-one. Um, they have a complaint process that you can go through them. You can also contact Neighborhood Services, um, and file a com- it's not really filing a complaint, but it's just making them aware, um, of any kind of unreasonable noise, noise that's too loud. It's important that community members document, um, any kind of violations because by time, oftentimes by time a city employee is going to arrive and try to assess what's going on, the noise has ceased. Um, certainly when they see police officers arriving, the noise is typically going to stop or at least quiet down. So if neighbors have noise complaints, it's important that they document it the best they can with video surveillance, surveillance cameras that they have, not surveilling their neighbor, but just normal security cameras that they might pick up the noise and keep that, keep a record of it so that we can document those complaints. It's very difficult for us to do anything when we don't hear it and we're trying to go out there and document with just the city. That's the, the three main, PD, Neighborhood Services, and three-one-one.
Thank you very much, Attorney Connell.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Yes, um, I would like this answered. Like, I have a, um, a section in my district where there's, um, a grinding noise. Well, the lady that complains about the grinding is an, is an elderly lady, and it is going on in her area, okay? But when the police get there, there's nothing going on. So with her not knowing how to use a camera nor recorder, so how are we going to be able to document this? Or, because the neighbors does, kind of like they run in a chop shop, okay? So how are we going to be able to, um, help her out with the noise?
So from my humble perspective, I think one option could be other neighbors. If other neighbors are aware and are willing to help her document what's going on, if there's other people in the community that she can contact to help document it, it's not, uh, exceptionally reasonable to think that a city employee is going to wait and sit outside and wait to document for a long period of time. And certainly if it's a consistent time, then possibly we could have a city employee be there, um, at that regular time to try to document it. But I think it could be difficult for the city to try to document that if it's not consistent or if it's not something that's always at the same time. It's not, it may not, and I'm not the final decision maker by any means, but it may not be the best use of resources to have code enforcement sit on a, in the neighborhood waiting for a noise to happen. Thank you.
Any other council members? This time then we will go to the public. Any members of the public, uh, wish to speak either in favor or against the bill at this time? Either in person or online?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Anyone wishing to speak against the bill?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in opposition.
Members, any other questions?
I want you to, um, approve or send to the floor council, um, Bill twenty-seven twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
You have a motion to approve or motion for a favorable in a second? Clerk Toronto, can you please do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nizkowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. It will go forward with favorable recommendation. And last but not least, Clerk Toronto, can you please give Bill twenty-eight twenty-five a second reading?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the historic preservation ticket surcharge for the Morris Performing Arts Center.
Thank you. Do we have a committee report?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, this was heard in personal and finance committee this afternoon. It was given a favorable recommendation to the committee of the whole.
Thank you very much. Ms. Throw.
Good evening, Council. Jenna Throw, City Attorney, with offices on the twelfth floor of this building. And I come before you tonight on Bill number twenty-eight dash twenty-five with an amendment to the Morris ticket surcharge. And, um, I have with me tonight, um, for additional questions, Amber Schisler and Deja Moore from the Morris. Um, the intent of this ordinance is to ensure compliance with new FTC regulations that go into effect on May twelfth. As a, in general, those regulations are intended to, um, ensure like truth in ticketing and pricing um, for shows and hotels and, um, different establishments like that. As it relates to the city, um, we're particularly looking at the Morris and the way the Morris markets its, uh, show tickets. The majority of the Morris ticketing has already been, uh, readdressed through our ticketing vendor to be compliant with these new regulations. The only piece that's still needed to be addressed is the, uh, transaction fee that, uh, that the Morris had. This, the update, the transaction fee that we had could not be incorporated into a per-ticket total price as required by these regulations because it applies to the transaction rather than the ticket. So the way that our ticketing service presents the total price compliant with the regulations, it can't translate the transaction fee the, the same way. So the update that we're proposing tonight is to convert the transaction fee into an equivalent update in the per-ticket fee so that it can be incorporated in a compliant way into our ticketing system. Um, the revenue that this fee generates is an important part of the Morris's revenue. And so it is important to continue capturing that revenue through this update. Um, the details of the update, the per-ticket fee was previously three dollars and fifty cents with a per-transaction fee of five dollars. And so, uh, we did an analysis of what increase it would take to, on average, preserve the same revenue. And we determined that that was a dollar twenty-five increase. And so we're proposing to increase the per-ticket fee to four dollars and seventy-five cents and eliminate the transaction fee. And that will eliminate, that will allow the revenue from the prior transaction fee to be captured in a compliant way and still be able to present the total price per ticket consistent with these new regulations. So if you have anything else that you'd like to add, I'm sure.
Amber Schisler, I'm the Director of Ticketing and Strategy at the Morris Performing Arts Center at two-eleven, uh, North Michigan. The way that this, uh, transaction, the per-transaction fee was captured that is not compliant with the FTC regulation is that there's no longer any fees allowed to be presented in cart. Every fee and everything has to be part of an all-in price during the selection process of the ticket. And a disclaimer on that page that says there's a five-dollar transaction fee is not sufficient, um, according to the FTC regulation, uh, which is about three hundred thirty-five pages of, uh, regulations. So, uh, yeah, we're trying to be very compliant with this because of the potential fines. And there's no grandfathering in, and it does have to go into effect on May twelfth of this year.
Thank you. Uh, council members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public hearing on Bill twenty-eight twenty-five. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak either in favor or against on Bill twenty-eight twenty-five in person or online?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor or opposition.
Thank you. That will close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to, uh, council members. Any further discussion or comments? I'm going to take a motion.
I'll make that Bill twenty-eight twenty-five go to the council with a full recommendation.
Second.
Motion for a favorable recommendation in a second. Clerk Toronto, can you please do a roll call for us?
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Nizkowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The bill will go to third reading with a favorable recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back. A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee of the whole is now adjourned.
Full council is now in session. Uh, this is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading and actions taken regarding the bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Uh, Clerk Toronto, could you please give Bill twenty-three dash twenty-five a third reading?
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana.
amending Chapter 6, Article 9 of the South Bend Municipal Code to update the regulations for flood damage prevention.
Counselor Warner, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole?
Bill comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 23-24.
Move for passage.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Vice President Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
23-25 is passed. Clerk Toronto, please give Bill 26-25 a third reading.
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 13, Article 4, Section 13-58, Chapter 2, Article 12, Section 2-142, and Chapter 13, Article 10, Section 13-96 to update the regulations for discharging firearms.
Counselor Warner, is there a recommendation?
The bill comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Move for passage. Second.
All right, there's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember Nisgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bill 26-25 has now been adopted. Clerk Toronto, please give 27-25 a third reading.
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 13, Article 7, Section 13-81 to repeal the ordinance prohibiting public nuisance noises.
Councilman Warner, is there a recommendation?
2725 also comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
All right, I will now entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Vice President Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
27-25 has now been adopted. Clerk Toronto, please give 2825 a third reading.
Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the historic preservation ticket surcharge for the Morris Performing Arts Center.
Counselor Warner, is there a recommendation?
The bill received a favorable recommendation.
All right, I will now entertain a motion.
Move for passage. Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Councilmember Nisgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, Bill 2825 has passed. All right, we're getting ready to go to resolutions. This is the portion of the council meetings where the common council here bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. Report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee to which the bill was referred to for an advisory review and recommendation is then given. During the public portion on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes. Would those speaking in favor go on first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal from the presenter. Clerk Toronto, please give Resolution 2524 a read.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, adopting a written fiscal plan and establishing a policy for the provision of services to an annexation area in German Township, Edison Sundown Annexation Area.
All right, is there a committee report?
Yes, Mr. President. The zoning annexation committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
All right, we have our petitioner in front of us. Petitioner asks that you give your name and address for the record, please.
Skip Morrell, Principal Development Planner with offices on the 14th floor of this building. This should look pretty familiar. This is the pairing to Bill 14-25. So that bill was looking specifically at the annexation of this land. This resolution is looking to adopt the fiscal plan that kind of outlines how the city would be able to provide services like utilities, fire and police, as well as street maintenance. For a brief recap, this would be an annexation of two parcels just north of the intersection of Edison Road and Sundown Road. The petitioner is looking to utilize this space for warehousing, specifically looking to utilize city water for fire suppression to kind of expand the capacity of that warehouse. Have you take any questions?
Councilmembers, are there any questions? If there's no questions, I will now take it to the public hearing. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of Resolution 2524?
Good evening, council members. Again, Chris Goduski, Evan Marsh, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend. If you look at the fiscal analysis, it's a net positive benefit over that five-year period for the city of South Bend as the commercial area will be expanding. So I think that's a positive. And I did get some initial feedback previously from the earlier petition that wages current and proposed for the new development are between, it's an annual salary between $40,000 and $125,000. And then he said he was 99% sure that the masons and electricians will be local and union. I don't know about any other subs or the general contractor. I still can provide some more detailed information, if you like, in advance of the third reading, so.
Thank you so much.
Yep. I can take any questions you may have.
Any questions?
No, just like to thank you for getting that information for this bill. I appreciate you looking into that. Thank you so much.
All right.
I also would like to thank you for looking into that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is there anyone else that want to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone else from the public wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of the bill in person or online.
All right, at this time, the public hearing portion is now closed. Any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion in a second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Vice President Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, Resolution 2524 has now been adopted. Clerk Toronto, please give 2526 a reading.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as multiple properties and economic revalidation area for purposes of a nine-year real property tax abatement for Allen Edwin Residential Builders LLC.
All right, do we have a committee report?
The bill was heard in community investment this afternoon and comes forward with a favorable recommendation by the Community Investment Committee.
All right, we have our petitioner in front of us. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, council members. Joe Molnar, Assistant Director of Growth and Opportunity with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. As we discussed at committee, Bill 2526 is a declaratory resolution for a multifamily development real property tax abatement located at the intersection of West Marion and Leland with multiple addresses given on the screen here. The property is currently vacant and is owned by the Redevelopment Commission, who have entered into a purchase agreement with Allen Edwin Homes for the construction of new housing units on the site. The property is located just north of Lincoln Way West and about a half mile northwest of downtown South Bend. As you see on the image on the right, primarily vacant lots that used to have housing on them that have been vacant for some time. This is an aerial of the neighborhood from 1972. If you'd focus in on this house here to give you some scale of what the neighborhood looks like today, that was 1972, and this is that same house today. As you've seen, most of the housing around it has been demolished over the last 50 to 60 years. In the larger neighborhood in Census Track 7, the Census Track has seen over a 50% decline from 1960 to 2020, and that's even with a gain in population from 2010 to 2020. So really, the goal of this project and a lot of the projects that we've supported with tax abatements in the past is to bring people back into our neighborhoods, bring investment back into the neighborhoods. This is a site plan showing how the overall development would look with a mix of single-family houses as well as a duplex and a cottage court-style housing development. And then Brian from Allen Edwin provided some renderings in between committee and council, which I think give a good scale of what the project will look like. So this is looking at that same angle I showed you before, but with the project completed. So as you see, the cottage court in the middle, good housing stock that should reflect good on the overall neighborhood character. And then this is looking straight down the cottage court. Feel so big porches allowing for a welcoming environment. The tax resolution itself, as discussed, involves 16 new rental housing. 12 of those 16 in an agreement approved with the city will be affordable for those earning less than 120% of the area median income. Typically, the 80 to 120% median income bracket, that's what we've been calling workforce housing, so those making middle-income housing. It's not market rate. There still is that income qualification. Just south of this project, the Redevelopment Commission also has a deal with Advantix Development Corporation, a different company that is building 10 low-income housing tax credit project rental units. Those are affordable, must be affordable to those making under 80% median income. So in the same neighborhood, right across the street from each other, you'll have two different housing types that we think will complement each other very well, new housing going back where we haven't seen housing for a long time. The total investment for this Allen Edwin project is approximately $2.5 million, and hopefully will activate long vacant land and provide new options for residents of South Bend. Considerable job opportunities will be available through the construction of the housing, and Allen Edwin has committed to using as much local labor as possible. Here is a map provided by Allen Edwin of their local trade partners. They are doing some construction in the suburban areas of the city, and these are the partners they've gathered through that process. Hopefully, we'll have even more partners at the end of this project. And you can see there is a large collection in South Bend itself. The details of the tax abatement, currently, the assessments on the property would generate about $816 annually in taxes if the land was privately held. But since it's held by the city through the Redevelopment Commission, zero taxes have been paid. The estimated annual taxes for all the property after the project is completed is a little less than $36,000. During the nine-year abatement, which the project qualified for, the total estimated taxes would be just under $323,000, with about 190 of those being abated and 133,000 of those taxes being paid. So a significant increase in tax revenue even with the abatement. After 10 years, we estimate $169,000 taxes paid compared to just $8,000 without the project. And after 20 years, $527,000 compared to just $16,000 without the project. With that, I'm happy to turn it over to Brian from Allen Edwin, who can give you a little background as well.
Thank you. My name is Brian Farkas. I'm the Director of Workforce Housing at Allen Edwin Homes. I've been in this role for about three years. Prior to that, I was in Mayor Duggan's office in Detroit focusing on the demolition program. So it's very passionate about being able to build on vacant infill lots like we have in South Bend. I created enough in Detroit, and so I think it's my penance to kind of build back on this. With that, any questions you have? We're really excited to be down here.
Make a comment.
I would like to say thank you for building homes in our area. I would like to go back to that one picture where it was like, looked like you were on Marion or, let me see, what you call it around, right there. Is that what it's practically going to look like? Is that kind of, okay, that's beautiful. And housing is something that we really do need here in our city. So I commend you and I thank you for bringing the fact that you're going to take care, build some more housing here. I think that's gorgeous. Thank you. So when will you start?
We intend to close the property in July. We've already undertaken significant investments in engineering on the site, and so we hope to start soon after that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Following up on that question, when do you anticipate people moving in?
Next year.
Okay, in springtime?
Yes, spring, springtime, summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, as the first district rep for that area, we are very much excited to be getting 16 new housing units into the area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I said this in committee, but I just live a couple, a few blocks down, and this really will just transform this area. It's been vacant for so long, there's overgrown trees. And so just to see these beautiful renderings is really exciting. Really want to thank you for that. And we're glad to see this moving forward. There were a couple of us at a groundbreaking over a year ago in the dead of winter. And so we're really glad now to see this moving forward.
Hopefully be warmer in July.
Yeah.
Great. I will now go to the public hearing portion. Clerk Toronto, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition?
I do not see any members of the public in person or online wishing to speak in favor or in opposition of the bill.
All right. All right, are there any other comments? Mr. Warner?
I'll keep it for, actually, this is kind of off-subject and off-tangent a little bit. Mr. Molnar and staff have been doing a great job. We've got some new RDC members kind of educating and continuing to. As I'm sitting here thinking, I know this kind of predates Ms. Gooden Rogers and probably Ms. Shaw's. A couple of our, and so maybe not, it doesn't have to be the next meeting or even in the next future. Maybe we do kind of an update of some of the housing, the smaller things that we've done on the RDC that are still pending and coming when they come here to counsel, those RDC members are aware, and it's all great stuff. As you said earlier, there's another one just across the street from here with Advantix that's 10 units of low income. And there's probably about six more that I'm forgetting, but I know. But, and I do want to commend staff for their work on all these. I know the time and effort that goes into kind of coordinating and putting all of these big agreements together, projects together is tremendous. So thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Yeah, we'll, we have some closings coming up this summer, both of the Advantix and all that. When we can provide an update then to the commission when those closings occur.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for $2.5 million investment. And we're getting $0 now in taxes. And after 10 years, $169,000. That's awesome. And we don't build housing, but we can support those who do. And we're excited about the housing that's coming here.
Thank you. And just to echo what you said about staff, we've been extremely impressed with the staff you have here, and we're looking at more opportunities in the city of South Bend.
Great. All right, I'll now.
It amazed me every week.
Six districts, six districts.
Sheila, you already got lettuce. All right, I'll now entertain a motion.
Move for passage.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion in second. Clerk Toronto, please call the roll.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgatsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Vice President Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
President Lee.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. Resolution 2526 has been adopted. All right, bill's on the first reading. Clerk Toronto, please give Bill 2925 a first reading.
First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at eleven forty-four Soren Street and eleven forty-eight Soren Street, councilmanic district number four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Alright, I would, um, would like to accept a motion to send to the South Bend Plan Commission for public hearing on May nineteenth and to the zoning and annexation committee for public hearing in third reading on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
A move, second.
There's been a motion in a second. Clerk Torotto, please call the roll. Oh, we can do this by acclamation, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes. Alright, is there any unfinished business?
Just clarify, our next meeting is on a Wednesday then? Or Tuesday?
It's on a Wednesday as it's Monday's Memorial Day, and the county council has the chambers for their Tuesday meeting.
So we have it on Wednesday.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Wednesday.
Now, if you would like to come on Memorial Day? More, alright.
And we'll set a notice out, um, the end of this month, well, and within the next couple of weeks to remind residents about the notice change.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business?
I have some unfinished business.
Okay, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to update the council in reference to transpo. As you know, we lost Amy Hill as, um, the director there. Um, but we are in, um, the process. I'll be having a meeting this week. Uh, we'll be getting together to decide who's gonna do the search for the new director, probably looking at a six-month process. Um, so as that progresses, I'll keep the council in the loop. Um, she's, she's gonna be hard to replace, but I know someone is out there that would want to come here and, and have that job, so I'll keep you updated, but I would say we're looking at at least a six-month process, hopefully shorter, but, um, we'll see.
Thank you. Anybody else unfinished business? Any new business? If not, privilege of the floor, disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any person, may result in the individual without noticing, without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and address. Uh, individuals will be given three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting is thirty minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privilege of the floor to their appropriate council member or request the city clerk to contact a member of the city administration for review when topics assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Is there anyone that would like to address the privilege of the floor? Please, please come to this podium and state your name and address for the record.
Brenda Harris, eighteen twenty-six Philippa Street, South Bend, Indiana. I have been trying to get work done on my sidewalks for six or seven years. I've had Sheila Nagatzky, her husband, and Oliver Davis both out there written both several emails at their requests, have not gotten any response. I've left, uh, handwritten notes in the last two weeks with that gentleman there, no response. Um, this lady at the desk over there gave them a email. I did get a response from Sheila Nagatzky when she's, that lady over there sent her email, never got a response on my emails. Last week, I stepped out my door, saw the city working in the block between Indiana and Dubel. And I said, are you coming down the block? They said, no, we only got an order for this block. And I said, really? And the guy who was working there, he laughed. He said, yeah, we kind of thought we were working in the wrong block. I said, you are really? And he said, yeah, but we didn't get an order to do your block. Kids can't even ride their bicycles, and I've been trying for six years and just getting blown aside, and I don't understand it. I really feel like I'm getting taxation without representation. And what do I need to do to even get somebody to answer an email? They've both been out there and see, these sidewalks are horrible, kids can't even ride bikes. And six, seven years is ridiculous.
Thought that was your thing going down that way, but I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
No, I said, I thought they were going all the way down. I did not know they were going to stop.
No. They said they only have orders for that block.
That doesn't make sense.
And it floods and everything. I'm just so frustrated because I have begged and begged.
Okay.
That's all.
If I, if I could, just to let every, to let you know that they, that is in the sixteen-hundred block, and I think that was associated with the church and the school there. I did, um, make contact. We do have a council allocation, as I told you about. We've had this discussion before. And I checked to see if this was, because we used to get an update that would say when sidewalks were approved, denied, or, you know, pending, mean if you submit it this year, it might be a year, it might be two years before you actually see the work. And what appears to have happened is when that was originally put in, they didn't carry that over. So your request is in, it has been recorded, and so it's this year, it's not gonna have any, see anything this year, but what they'll do now is go through them all again, and then in the fall, we'll resubmit, and that's, that's just the process. So I apologize that that was overlooked. Um, but I have been advocating on your behalf, and I know I've been out to your home a couple of times. I know I have responded, and I know I've called you a couple of times, and I see that you're frustrated, and I apologize for that. Uh, but me and, uh, Councilmember Davis, who lives, you li- he lives in the sixth as well, so now you have two people that can advocate for your behalf, and we'll work together for you. You, you're welcome, ma'am. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
One quick question, since they're already out there, is there any way they can just continue right up there? I'll just make more space.
They're, they're in the sixteen-hundred block right now. And so I can find out. I just talked to him. They said they were putting her back on the allocation list that it got overlooked somehow, so between you and I, if you would like to call, or I've, I've already called.
Yeah.
And we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
If there's, if there's any, if there's anyone else, or not anyone else, at this point, our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.